Are we ready? All right. Then I would now like to call to order the April twentieth meeting of the Detroit Board of Water Commissioners. We have already called the room and we know we have a quorum. And we have already approved the agenda. So we now move to the approval of the minutes of March the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coleman moves.
Is there?
And it's supportive for Commissioner Forte. Any corrections or adjustments to the minutes of March the sixteenth? Hearing that all those in favor of approving them, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the minutes are approved. We will now convene a public comment for any purpose, hopefully relevant to what we do here. If is there anyone who would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Come forward. Tell us your name. You heard the instructions before about how we conduct our public hearings. And we welcome you for three minutes.
My name is Michael Shane. I'm a resident of District One. I live on Patton Street. I've been here before raising concerns about lead lines in the neighborhood. And since I was here last month, I started to learn a lot more about lead lines and that the difficulty in understanding how to contain the problem until the lead lines removed. I spoke to Jermaine about the situation at his home, his land bank home. And it's apparent to me that the land bank is doing something wrong when they take out stop boxes. Isn't it, I believe they're supposed to get a permit from DWSD to do so. Had they gotten the permit to remove the stop box, you would know the details of what happened to the water service line in his home. He has, I've spoken to him several times. He has dug down there and found lead lines still in the ground, which means the land bank is leaving lead lines all over the city. And that's not right, because you know, and we know from the experience of Ben Harbor right now, that when you start disturbing lead lines in one part of the neighborhood, it propagates the damage to nearby homes. We know that in Washington DC as well, twenty years ago, that the whole neighborhood, whole neighborhoods in Washington DC were contaminated when they started doing lead line removals. So we have the information now. We have enough empirical data and peer reviewed journal articles that identify this as a problem. Why are we letting the land bank get away with this? This might explain why there's lead in the schools that were just built. Maybe the land bank was taking down houses near the schools. And and I'm sure they were because they've taken down so many houses. They've done this improperly. I want the DWSD board to go after the land banks, tell them to cease and desist. If they don't know how to take a lead line out, it and I believe it's illegal to leave parts of the lead line in there when they start working on this. I talked to Eileen Batanzo, who is one of your experts that you hired in the last few years. She told me that you can't just take part of the lead line out and leave the other part in there. So that might explain why we are seeing lead in unexplainable unexplainable areas all around the city. That means you also can't take out a lead line in one house on a block, because that will propagate the problem to the rest of the houses on the block. And I would like the DWSD to begin to respond to these concerns that I'm raising. I did write you a memo last month, maybe six weeks ago, and I've gotten a verbal response. I appreciate the meeting that we had, a Zoom meeting, but I haven't gotten a written response. And I would like to track this, and I'm going to keep coming back, because I believe you guys don't have a full grasp of the nature of the problem facing the city, the residents of the city of Detroit. Thank you very much.
Mr. Director, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I'd like you to just let the gentleman know, I believe we have a special meeting, because we all have been raising these concerns as the residents have been coming before us with these serious issues regarding land banks. So am I correct they're supposed to be here on which day? Unless they changed again to twenty-fifth? Oh, May fifth? Twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I, so I.
So the committee meeting? It would be the first Wednesday in May?
Yeah.
For regular, for the committee meeting? Okay.
Yeah.
So the first Wednesday in May, come on back. And.
No meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Mr. Shane, we heard you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I mean, there was a lot, lot wrapped up in there. Let me just address a couple of the issues. I I don't want to speak for the land bank, but I I do want to state that the new lead and copper rule does in fact require that both the private side of the line, as well as the public side of the line be replaced and it be replaced at DWSD's expense. And so I'll let the land banks speak to how they sell properties and what's required when that's sold. I won't get into that. I I do want to address the two more issues. So first of all, Mr. Shane has acknowledged that Elin Batan is an expert in this area. She's my expert. I hired her to help us design the program that we're implementing. And so I respect her opinion to the point that I've hired her to help us design the removal of lead service lines. And then the third point I want to address are schools. As I've said at this table many times, there are no lead lines that enter into a school. None, not one in the city of Detroit, where the school is serviced by a lead service lines. They're mostly a residential issue. The problems that the schools have had have been with the pipes that are inside their buildings that have fixtures that contain lead. So I don't want anybody to believe that because we're removing lead service lines in a neighborhood, that it's contaminating a school. None of the schools have lead service lines. And that's just not, that's not true. And Dr. Vidi is doing everything that he can do to ensure that kids in schools are safe from it. So those three points, and again, we we will have a meeting with the land bank here the first week of May. And I I think the board has many questions that they will be posing that they'll be looking for answers to. And I I did have a conference call with the mayor's chief of staff, along with the land bank's attorney, to ensure that they will make, number one, make the meeting, but that they're aware of the issues that this board is concerned with. I I went over to the mayor's office, did a conference call with the land bank's attorneys, as as well as the director of the land bank, to make sure that they understood what exactly we were asking of them at the next meeting.
Commissioner Blackman.
Mr. Director, as it relates to the schools, is there not a sediment problem if the schools have been closed, let's say X number of months? And the the, as I understood it, there could be a problem, not necessarily related to lead service lines, but the 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 pipes need to be flushed.
Absolutely. Stagnation?
Yes.
Is is the worst enemy, whether it's a school, a residential, commercial, industrial, anytime you have stagnant water, it needs to be flushed. And I've had this conversation with Dr. Vidi with regards to schools that are in neighborhoods that don't have a lot of homes in them where the water is moving through the water mains at a brisk pace, so that you don't have stagnation. They're aware of it. And they also understand clearly what the flushing instructions are. As you know, most of the schools will close over the summer. So that this is not a new problem that they are, that they deal with. They deal with it every year. They understand how to flush their system, the need to flush their system. And I think that they're doing the best job that they can.
All right, may I call, oh, I'm sorry?
Question for Director Brown. Just curious, just for the average homeowner, how can they tell if they have a lead line coming in their house?
It was, the first thing they should do is go, go to our website and we have very clear instructions.
Okay.
Number two, we, right today, right now, we have people out on the street delivering that information, a packet of that information on how to identify, how to flush, how to use filters. We've just updated that information using some of the information that we we've gained from our our resident experts. And we we just asked them to go take a look at the website and I'll walk them right through the the process. And we can make sure that anyone on the board that needs a packet today can take one with them in case they're, you know, they're in a position that they need to be able to refer to it to to give out the information.
All right. Mr. Kareem Ortiz. Please come down to the podium. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Yeah, my name's Kareem Ortiz and I live in the four eight two one three area. That's that's over there where they're living or they're making that new factory on Grasset in that area. But I basically have two concerns that I hopefully I can get the answers for. Firstly, I got a foot of water in my basement and it's been like that for about four months. That that water hasn't gone down at all. And I was wondering if it might have something to do with that that factory being built, because there's a really big pool of water over there. And they they got a pump over there. They either pump the water in or out. I don't know which. But I was wondering if perhaps that might have something to do with all that water being in my basement and not going anywhere. And then secondly, more importantly, right now I don't have water running in my property. And I talked to them about maybe eight months ago, maybe more. And they told, they came by and they told me my stop box needs to be replaced. And and they said that that was the thing preventing me from getting water to my property. And so this was like eight months ago and the last time I talked to somebody was maybe six months ago. And I'm getting absolutely nowhere. So I was just wondering if there, is there something that can be done about that? I mean, basically, you know, my, you know, what's preventing me from getting water to my property is a stop box being replaced. So I don't, I don't exactly know what to do from this point, but they painted the street. They said Ms. Diggs was going to come by and, you know, and and paint the street as they they did. In fact, they did that twice. They came by, they painted the street, the paint faded, they came back, painted the street again. And still I have no water because they haven't.
There's three issues that that you raised. First of all, the new facility that's being built based on the new city ordinance that the water department had city council act on requires them to manage their storm water onsite, not to put it into the storm system in order to contribute to neighborhood flooding. And so the likelihood that that's the problem is not, not very good. Secondly, it's either one of two things. Either the DWSD's sewer main has collapsed and therefore the water that's getting out of your lateral sewer line has nowhere to go. That's easy for us to check. We'll send the crew out tomorrow to make sure that that sewer is down and flowing. If your neighbors are not experiencing flooding, then in all likelihood, the sewer is intact and not collapsed. The most likely problem is that your lateral sewer line has either disconnected from the sewer or it's severed at at some point. I would suggest that you have a plumber put a camera into the sewer line. Certainly you don't want to turn the water on in that house until this this problem gets rectified or instead of having one foot of water, you'll have several feet. And so we've got to, we've got to figure that out. So before you leave, we'll get your address. We'll check our sewer. You need to check your lateral sewer line. And we'll, we'll try to help you solve the problem with regards to the stop box. We have to, you know, before you leave, somebody from my office is gonna, gonna talk to you and we're gonna work through. It it sounds like there's no one in the, in the property right now. You're trying to get it.
No, I'm living there.
So you're, you're living there and you don't have any water?
No.
Okay, we'll make it in an emergency and and try to get someone out there tomorrow. So somebody from my office, so that's listening will, if you just have a seat, they'll grab you and we'll try to give you, get you some help. Have you, have you been over to Wayne Metro to to try to get any assistance at all? They'll walk you through that process also.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't exactly know what the next move would be, so that's why, yeah.
Okay. We're gonna try to help you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Jermaine Paines?
Good afternoon, board members again.
Good afternoon.
Gary Brown, director of DWSD. I just have a few issues that I'm following up on. I think we already kind of talked about my water line, but I had, I appreciate you, Gary Brown, a lot, because you had some people working out there on my streets, camera in the city sewer and doing some other necessary things to try to figure out what's going on with my specific property. When I talked to Mr. Dotson, and I don't know if you know who he is.
Oh, yeah.
But he works for the water department and he's a supervisor. Me and his conversation went okay from the beginning. But today I had reached out to him to follow up with him about my sewer. And from my understanding is when the gas station dug up all my pipes, and this is that situation with the gas station being behind my house and illegally tapping into my sewer line, they had all that water in my basement, so I decided to dig it up to see why it was watered down there and all my pipes was disconnected. So I disconnected back what was taken apart by the gas station owner with him being admitted to Mr. Dawson that he did buy the gas station and they did illegally dig this property up to run a sewer pipe there. Now it's causing problems where my house is not meeting the sewer, the city sewer. He said that it may be some type of mechanical thing installed there that it may be just at the property line where he don't know if it's a city responsibility or it's my responsibility. Well, I already changed my whole sewer line. So where the issue is, is where the block at or the problem where it's, it's not getting to the sewer, it's on the city side. And so I was asking Mr. Brown, if you can look into this further with Mr. Dawson and let him know how many times I've been to these meetings and let him know that the land bank sold me this house with with no information regards to this issue where the water line is detached from the house as well as the sewer line detached from this property. And I did also request that the land bank be here. Once again, they failed to show up. So that's also an issue. It's an issue and it's been continuous been an issue. And I think that, Mr. Brown, you should be putting more pressure on them, because they should be at this meeting. We have hundreds of people in the city of Detroit with no water, no water lines, no stop boxes, including myself. I don't have a stock box. So therefore they took out the box, they took out my water line and the gas station took out my sewer line. So I'm now left where I'm on the verge of losing my land bank house that I spent several hundreds of thousands on. And I didn't just buy this house to look at it. I bought this house so I can stay in and be a part of that community, the Greenfield District Community. So Gary Brown, please apply more pressure on the land bank and please have a conversation with your workers in the field to assess my issue and try to resolve it, because I'm trying to go in back and forth with everybody at the water department.
Mr. Director, please, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Kinlock?
Okay, so a lot of what caused us to start focusing in on the practices of the land bank was because this gentleman came and, you know, we've heard it, but what really caused for me to act is, you know, the consistent frustration and that came from him and a few other folks who came on that day. I'm asking you, Mr. Director, this case has been, this in case issue has been before us a number of times. Whatever the department can do to resolve this, because this was part of the land bank issue that stemmed with you, led to you to go to the mayor and have them to set aside money, you know, the money or all of whatever the arrangement is. If we can get this issue here out of our, off our table, you know, however you can.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, I, I would also suggest that the land bank has a public meeting with public comment in which you can talk to the board of directors of the land bank every two weeks, every two weeks. And so that might be an opportunity to be at, we bought this house from the land bank. All of these issues are with the land bank or a gas station. But as you know, a lateral sewer line runs from the home and connects to the sewer. All of that is private property. It's not DWSD property. I'm, I'm going to do everything that I can to resolve, Mr. Payne.
You know, even touch the land bank, you know, narrowing.
But there's, there's a lot going on here with no stop box. That means
I see.
This isn't just a sewer issue, it's a water issue that has to also be resolved. And and quite frankly, we're into the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range to do, to do both of these. And so we're going to you know, do everything we can to make sure that we can get it. As you know, I, we, we want paying customers. It doesn't mean no good to have people not being able to buy water and use our services. I want to get him onto the system so that we have a taxpayer that's, that's happy. But it's going to take the land bank to also participate in.
I know, and and so some, some of that is part of the, the, the thing there as well, that we need to, yes, they're here and we'll address them. This board will put whatever necessary guidance and strength as far as trying to get things resolved. But it's pretty simple. You have been very cooperative in trying to resolve these issues, but that land bank, the land bank, the citizens need to know that they need to go to those meetings and they need to show the same type of frustration. And hopefully they move some of the members of that board the way that you're moving us, because that, that, it seems like, is anyone going there? Because it seems like all of the issues with the land bank arrive here. And, you know, I never supported that framework, but it is what it is. Yep.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Blackman.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, excuse me. I was, I was not seen as being frustrated with the, the, the water department or the commissioners on this department. I want y'all to know, I really appreciate y'all. But I want y'all to know, the land bank has to be held accountable by the water and sewage department's attorneys as well. They're getting their attorneys on you guys. You guys need to put five motions and take this land bank to court, because like you said, you're coming out of thirty thousand dollars on one house fixing water problems and sewer problems that the land bank dug up these houses that were on a demolition list and didn't reconnect them. So this is an issue that the land bank and the water department is kind of involved in, because it's dealing with water and sewage. The land bank sold me the house like that. They're illegally selling houses and not telling people that they have landlines. So I'm sorry, it's not frustrating for Commissioner or the board members. I appreciate y'all, but the land bank needs to have accountability too.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. Commissioner Blackman.
Thank you. You mentioned that the land bank meets every two weeks. How does a normal citizen know about when those meetings are?
It's, it's on, it's on their website. We, we checked.
So we need to instruct our customers to go on the land bank's website to find out how often they, when they meet.
Yes.
The other issue that I think we've announced it, but they're going to be, we're going to have a meeting with them on May fourth.
Yes.
And I think that's another opportunity for people to hear directly from them and how it relates to our business as well. Thank you.
All right, Elena Harada?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you?
Good. How are you?
We're good.
I'm here to talk to you about the land bank. I'm here actually on behalf of one more family that I spoke to and also, of course, with Maine, who has been agitating to have the right to live in his house, the way the previous person, Mr. Ortiz, had said also that he would like to live in the house that he purchased in good faith from the land bank, not knowing that there was no stop box. Most of us never knew what a stop box was, never heard of it. And didn't know that if you got this house, that you would have to spend that kind of money in order to be able to get water to your house. Now, I live in an area, I live in Corktown, where there's endless construction of co-ops and condos that are being built that'll cost people seven hundred thousand dollars to live in. And the developers are all getting tax abatements for building those, that's those structures. And those structures are also using our infrastructure. And rich people coming into Detroit are using our infrastructure. And regular people and poor people are buying these land bank houses in the dream of being able to have a house to live in and can't live in it because they don't have any water hookup, because the demolition caused them to remove the water hookup. Those demolitions were very expensive for Detroit. They continue. They're not stopping. There's a lot of money going missing in the demolition from clean dirt to all kinds of trickery that's going on. And Hamrick made a lot of money on this. There's a lot of people who have made a lot of money on these contracts that have made a lot of Detroiters absolutely miserable. It's miserable to live in Detroit without water. There are a lot of people living without water. The land bank, as you know, is a criminal operation. There is no way that anybody, any of us, not you, not me, are going to hold them accountable. They're not elected. You can go to their meetings if you want to. You might as well go to sit in front of nine bowling pins. There's nothing that can happen with the people going to the land bank. It's not going to happen. They're completely protected. It's all speculation. I'm just asking you to look into the possibility of taking some of that money that came in here and giving people what they need to be able to get water running into their homes. If it's ten thousand dollars, if it's fifteen thousand dollars, that's a lot of money for the water board, but it's absolutely out of reach for the person that bought a two or three thousand dollar home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? I'm not seeing any hands. You know, my, the comment I would like to make is, and and I think where the gap is, is the land bank, when it sells homes, they sell them as is. And I think the attitude that's taken is, you know, the buyer should beware in a, in a three thousand dollar home that needs a twenty thousand dollar improvement is not a three thousand dollar home. Now, the question is, is whose responsibility is that? And it seems to me, while the land bank says we're selling these homes as is and we're not warranting anything, in fact, you get a quitclaim deed, you don't get a warranty deed. They certainly should be held accountable to give someone notice that the three thousand dollar home they're buying, property they're buying is going to require a twenty or thirty thousand dollar repair.
Mr. Chair, you're absolut.
Yeah, 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 I'm done. Commissioner Kinlock. Commissioner Forte.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to, my comment is, is this again. I really rue the day that the land bank decided to sell homes. Because I think people get excited by the price. People, when they buy a conventional home, don't even read their documents and don't understand what they're buying. And that's a conventional home, let alone an as is bargain basement house. And I rue the day that the land bank even came up on that idea. Because unfortunately, it's, it is what it is and it's just causing heartache. And I just feel for everyone that's been in front of us with a home that they didn't even expect to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on. And so that's my comment. And I know we'll meet with them. And maybe my structure is, you know, why not just, just do away with it?
That's.
Do away with it.
At a minimum, we, you know, they have the list of homes that were on the demolition list. That's information they possess now. And at a minimum, when someone buys a house or puts a bid on a house that was on the demolition list, they should be at least told it's likely you don't have a stop box or you don't have a connection to the sewer. And then the purchaser can decide if they want to conduct an inspection before they close. That can be done tomorrow. But what I would go further and say, you know what your property is. You go ahead and do the inspection and find out if this property that you're offering to the public is suitable to have water come in and sewage go out. I mean, I, I, I think that's just a reason. I mean, I think that's just a reasonable expectation. And we'll say that in two weeks. Commissioner Kinlaw.
You're absolutely correct. They need to either stop selling these as-is homes, just stop it. Because it's like the commissioner just said, it's creating a lot of heartache and it's just putting a sore eye on this city. They need to stop that. I don't care about people acknowledging that they have been told that there is no stop box and no water line connected. That doesn't seem to be working either. So if they want to sell these homes, they should require some sort of bond or something that will guarantee that and acknowledge in a serious way that work has to be done and that this is the amount, the cost associated with getting that done. Or they need to just, in my opinion, just stop selling, just do what as-is. And so I'm going to be interested, interesting, interested in seeing or hearing, I should say, the response from the land bank in regards to the idea of stop selling these as-is homes. Because I think now their appointees, they exist under the authority of an ordinance. And the city council, I hope and wish that they're hearing this as much as we are because they can modify ordinances, they can direct by ordinance how this land bank is to operate. So I hope that they're, you know, taking heed to this as well.
And, you know, in some respect, this is a bait and switch. When you say, here's a three thousand dollar house and you possess reasonable information, I suggest, no, it's not. And, you know, legal theories are going in my head now. If we were to, because the question is, we're going to talk about moving forward, but we also have to, we can't ignore, you know, Mr. Payne and the other people who now are in this dilemma. And if we were to try and hold them accountable legally, saying, oh, you, this was bait and switch, they're going to rate, you know, you, Mr. Payne, you signed the at-is paper. And they're going to put that right in our face. So there has to be a creative solution to this. But I think morally, the land bank was involved in a bait and switch. And you shouldn't do that, period.
Mr. Chair, question.
Mr. Coleman. What happens to the proceeds from these homes? What, who gets it? Is it the city or what do the funds go? Do we know?
I presume it goes into the operations of the land bank.
Right. Ultimately, this goes back to us, the city.
Yeah. Well, you know, again, I don't want to speak for the land bank. I want them to speak for themselves. The, I think their, the goal right now, which may have an unintended consequence, is to get out of the business of selling homes by getting them out of their inventory and not taking anymore in. And then the city is going to take over the demolition process. That's, that's the ultimate goal. But in trying to get them out of their inventory, you're selling them to people that may or may not have the means in which to bring them up to code. I just want to remind this board that before the house is foreclosed on and even gets to the land bank, the water department has written off all the debt, millions of dollars. So that when they sell the properties, it's got a zero. So through the foreclosure process, the debt, we've-
There's no lien on it.
We've written it off.
Yeah.
Okay, we can't, we can't invest rate dollars into private property. That's, that's not, we're not allowed to do that. We'll be sued if we do that. And so this is a problem that has to, can't be solved by the water department in and of itself. It needs the cooperation of other city agencies. I have lobbied extremely hard in order to get ARPA dollars and other federal funding into the city coffers under the home repair program so that we can at least refer Mr. Payne and others to the city to a program that's very similar to the roofs that are being repaired. You either borrow the money at a very low interest rate or you get a grant in order to do the plumbing issues within the home. Because, you know, as you know, it's not just the water line and the sewer line. The plumbing in those homes needs to be also replaced in most cases. And so there needs to be dollars in the home repair program of city government in order to address plumbing issues. If for no other reason, conservation. Once we bring you the new rate model that has a lifeline rate attached to it, it's going to depend on conservation. You can't have homes that are leaking water. And fifty percent of our customers are renting. And so landlords have to be held accountable in order to make those repairs. If the tenant cannot make it, they're making money off of this property. So this is a complex problem that is, I won't take up any more water department time to talk about an issue that really, that needs to be talked to in a broader context with a broader group of city departments to resolve these issues. Certainly, we play a big part in it, but it's, it's just a part. It's not, nothing that we can do can solve this problem in and of ourselves.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to alert you that we do have members of the public virtually who would like to speak.
I'm sorry, do we have somebody else that would like to address the board?
Yes, we have the members online. We have, first up, we have Akila Redmond.
Mr. or Ms. Redmond?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hello, ma'am.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you very much. Yes. I work with Councilwoman at Large Mary Waters. And there are several constituents who are having problems with basement flooding, who have the same problems people in the pilot program are having. What can these people expect the city to do for them? Not the pilot area, but they have the same problem. Will there be assistance for them?
Ma'am, are you, are you talking about the basement backup prevention program?
Yes.
Okay, and the two pilot areas, one of which is Aviation District and one is Victoria Park.
Yes, but we have residents who live in four, eight, two, three, four, who are having the same problem.
Yes.
What is available for them? They are very worried as the rainy season is coming and they're going to have the same problem with the flooding.
I understand. Right now, there are eleven communities that are scheduled to participate in the basement backup protection program. We've just, this week began work in this project. Other areas of the city that are not one of the eleven, we will assess them after we get done with the eleven. Right now, the dollars that are available, where it's two point four million dollars, which only covers the two pilot communities. Once we're successful there, we'll go back to city council, ask for thirteen million more to do the other eleven communities. And once we've completed those, we will see if there are dollars available to branch out to other communities within the city. But right now, it's just the eleven communities that are participating in this program.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else online?
Yes, next we have Valerie Branass.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Branass.
Thank you very much. I, I hope this is appropriate for this meeting. I wanted to mention that in February, according to my water bill, I paid a dollar fifty-one a gallon for water that came to my house. I kind of laughed and thought I could get it cheaper at Costco. But even if I shut it off, I would still be paying a hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents for drainage. And the reason I'm talking to you about it today is I have submitted two different requests for consideration. The first one was submitted April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And apparently that one was lost. I followed up a couple of weeks later to inquire about it, didn't get a reply. Then I kind of, I guess, I had the COVID blues. So the second one didn't get filed until March second of twenty twenty-two. And apparently it's somehow in the system. I guess what I'd like to say is, what makes this really super important for me is that when I did the original request and I did a lot of measuring and, you know, they had counted landscaping in the front of my house as part of my driveway, they called my very pervious flagstone patios as parking lots and et cetera, you know, really wrong designation. So I calculated last year when I filed that I was overpaying by forty-six dollars a month from the very beginning. And that was turning into a sizable amount of money. And of course, I think it's been increased about ten dollars in the recent, recent increases. So I don't know, is there any way to light a fire under this? Or do I just have to wait until it walks its way through the system?
Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that if we could get her address, that we have our board secretary track this in this meeting, put it on the calendar. And we will make sure that at the next meeting, we get an answer. I think I understand the issue very clearly. There's a dispute with regards to the acreage that's being deemed impervious.
That's exactly right.
We can, we can get to that, to the bottom of that pretty quickly. We'll track it in this committee meeting and have, in the next two weeks, at your next meeting, have a response on how we resolved it.
All right.
I just, I just need Mrs. Branass to be able to put her address into the chat so that we can.
All right, Ms. Branass, would you mind putting your address in the chat? And then we'll follow up.
And I'd like to remind members of the public that are attending virtually to please fill out the form that is available in the chat.
All right, anybody else online that would like to address the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Philip Shane.
Hi, thank you, Board, and thank you Director Brown for your time today. I just had a question about where I can find information about any sort of experimentation or any sort of changes in the orthophosphate levels that Great Lakes Water Authority is putting into the water that is servicing, you know, my neighborhood. Just trying to find out where I can get more information about that. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, I know that we have your, your contact information. I know that you've had at least one meeting with the chemist from the Great Lakes Water Authority. We will make sure that she gives you a call and explains the details and where that information can be found.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shane. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have first name Eloise.
What is the name again, please?
Eloise, she's muted, she needs to unmute.
Eloise, are you here? Do we have anyone else? If she comes back on, we will accommodate her.
No, Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chair, we've been at it for about two and a half hours now and we had guests that were here to do a very short presentation. I'm just wondering if I could ask for, for them to be moved up into the agenda.
Yes, where are they on the agenda?
That's a good question.
This was the American Water Resource-
Yeah, it's thirteen B.
I'm going to ask for unanimous consent that the agenda be amended and that we move to item thirteen B, the American Water Resource presentation. And Mr. Brown, perhaps you can start us out.
Yes, this is long awaited. You know, I, back when I was on city council and I can't even remember how many years ago, I was asked to take a look at this program, a warranty program for both service lines and lateral sewer lines. And I, you know, I'm being honest, I wasn't, I wasn't that much in favor of the program the way that it was designed and outlined to me. The National League of Cities was really pushing the program and I just felt that it was going to create a situation of the haves and the half-nots. And the people that could afford it would, would get the protection. And they didn't really offer enough protection for people that were of low income. But being that I'm at the water department now and had a opportunity to help shape this particular program, I'm, you know, one hundred percent in favor of it. You hear every, every meeting, people that are coming in and talking about service lines and lateral sewer line issues. I would say most of the flooding in the city is resulting from that. This company, for less than eight dollars a month, will be offering a warranty program that they will make those replayers, repairs or replacements to either the service line or the sewer line at their cost. And so we're excited about it. I don't want to say anything else about the program because my staff will tell me I, I got it wrong. We'll let the people that are, are going to be implementing this program. And we spent quite a bit of time with them on how we're going to market this program to our customers that are somewhat unique in the city of Detroit, at least, I think sometimes are somewhat unique. And they've been more than accommodating and understanding some of the uniqueness that we have in the city. So we're glad to bring them up and have them come introduce themselves and walk through the program.
Thank you, Mr. Director, and thank you, members of the board, for having us today and for choosing us to be your partner with this home warranty program. One thing that I will get off, say off the bat, primarily because my lawyers always ask us to stress this, is the difference between a warranty and an insurance program. Insurance programs tend to cover unexpected consequences, things that happen out of the blue. Warranty programs cover wear and tear. And we stressed that early on because it's an important distinction with the programs that we offer. And the two were, really the three we're talking about here today are going to be our water line protection, our sewer line protection, and then a combo. So starting off with myself, my name is Benjamin Brochman. I'm Director of Client Success at American Water Resources. Prior to coming here, I was with a regulated part of our former parent company, American Water, working with large users, which included some of our largest municipalities. And I originally got my background working on policy issues, including revolving loan funds, infrastructure investments. So I'm not going to lie into the detriment of my coworker. I was very excited to hear some of that talk earlier just because I've seen how important the investment is in all types of investment, both on the consumer side, the residential side, as well as in the broader municipality side. Next slide, please. So again, my name is Benjamin Brochman, Director of Client Success. My colleague Tiffany Nally is going to talk about number one, the introductions and the offer summary. I'm going to talk a little bit about number two, the marketing strategy and the program snapshot. And we have the questions and contact information at the end. We encourage you to take, ask us questions throughout. This is intended to be a high-level overview. I already have some questions down that I'm going to bring to our team to get answers on, I think, from some of the discussions that I heard earlier. So anything that we're unable to answer today, we'll work with the director's staff and your individual staff to get you those answers quickly and ensure they're thorough to address not only your concerns, but the concerns of any Detroit residents and constituents. Next slide.
Much taller than me. Let me move that down a little bit. Hi, everyone. I'm Tiffany Nally. I'm the Partner Liaison for American Water Resources, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about our programs. Next slide, please. So let's start from the beginning. Director, he laid it out pretty well about why Detroit wanted these type of programs in the city. And so they submitted a competitive, an RFP, a bid, and AWR won that bid because we have better coverage. We have longer warranty on repairs and we offer affordable pricing. Next slide, please. So let's talk about some of that better coverage. So we have unlimited occurrences and a limited amount, dollar amount. Every year you can file as many claims and there's no cost to you. Your rates don't go up based off of the amount of claims that you're filing. We cover normal wear and tear. Tree roots are very common with sewer lines. We cover to repair those sewer lines. We cover to replace them. If we encounter a leaking lead line, we will replace that line. The surface restorations, if we have to go into any of your grass area, we will rake, refill and reseed that area. If it's a public easement, we will replace that to code. So those are just some of the highlights, but there's no service fees, no deductibles to the residents to have this program. Next slide, please. Also with the partnership comes a dedicated support team. From the account management side, we will work through any issues that arise. We will make sure that we were, we are delivering that monthly reporting, and we're meeting those metrics that are defined in our agreement. We're also working to get a field supervisor, someone on the, in the field that's going to be able to resolve complaints. Go and visit job sites. Make sure that our contractors are operating safely because safety is our number one priority. We're also working to bring in four call, call center agents that are based out of Detroit that will be helping to assist with these calls. Next slide, please. So here is our offer summary. You'll see here it's a very low price point, monthly or annually. We, we anticipate that the uptick will be in our water and sewer line combo. It's a great value proposition for the homeowners. You can pay monthly, you can pay via credit card, you can pay via check. We have several different options. And again, it's an unlimited coverage per occurrence. And I will give it back to my colleague, who's much taller than me now, to talk about our marketing strategy. Thank you for your time.
And next slide, please. And the next one. So with our program, and I started talking about the difference between a warranty and insurance programs, there's the education portion. Then you get into the activation and enrollment, the committee outreach, and then the welcome and maintain. The education is something that, you know, most people don't think about home warranties. You've probably been asked when you're at Lowe's or Menards, you're buying something like, do you want the warranty on it? Most of us tend to cast those aside. When it comes to homes, and especially with the water line and sewer line, the areas that we have these programs, other large cities, you know, folks learn very quickly what is and isn't really their responsibility, what is and isn't covered. They're drawn to it partially because of the price point, mainly because of the peace of mind. You know, a lot of these, a lot of the education is done to really stress the cost of these repairs when it comes time. They're not cheap. And we've heard a lot from folks today and at other points in time about you to access water and sewer, something that's generally out of sight and out of mind. You know, a lot of us assume you turn it on, it goes down the drain, it's working. It might be working, it's not working the way it is. There's a lot of reasons for that. So that activation and enrollment, you know, that drives some of the demand. And then the outreach, you know, we do more of that inform, that educate, enhance the community awareness, you know, through partnerships like with DWSD. And then we welcome and maintain that. And we try to maximize the customer experience. And we have call center agents, the majority of which are US-based. As Tiffany said, we're going to have four agents specific to Detroit, in the city of Detroit. That's on top of one field of person that will be here to go around, work with contractors, work with DWSD and others, and actually view things. That's very important. That's a big part of the customer experience for us. There's a lot of programs out there where you dial it up, don't know where the call center is, don't know who's helping you, don't know what's going on. We really made it a point as a company and found a lot of our success comes from working with our partners, such as DWSD, and having those people on the ground. Next slide, please. This is still the example one, but this is just what the pre-mail or postcard and the launch package look like. These will be out and in-home. First, the pre-mail or postcard, which will arrive in-home on or about May second, depending on US Post Office, and the launch package coming a couple of days later. This is something that is co-branded with DWSD. We did work with the director and his staff to ensure that it met all of your standards, all of your quality control, worked on language. The postcard really is, you know, informative. Hey, you're going to get some information. This is kind of a general overview. This is coming, you know, in partnership with your water and sewer department. And then the launch package has a little bit more information on that. This is in addition to digital materials that will be out. So you have web advertising, Facebook, you know, Twitter, all of that fun stuff, as well as some TV ads that will be going out. And anything done with DWSD's logo, we are sharing that with DWSD again for your approval, your sign-off. Doesn't benefit anybody for us to go out and do things and use your logo and really abuse this partnership. That's not who we are. That's not how we operate.
A quick question. So the staff will also, staff will sign off on it, but to the director, you're going to make sure that the board have a, will we have a role in signing off on any of that?
If, if, if you'd like a role to sign off on it, we can make sure that we bring it to you.
Okay.
Just curious, why, why would we need to sign off on it?
We would want to see it because information going out, oftentimes stuff have gone out, and the people have questions about it, and there may be some misinformation. And then we're the ones held responsible for the information going out, just even if not to approve it, but just to make sure we have an opportunity to set our eyes on it.
Yeah, it doesn't have to come to a board meeting, but it.
You know, you know what I'm saying, just to.
An email can be sent out.
Yeah.
And Commissioners, these were reviewed by legal and they were reviewed by PA. So they were, all of the verbes was looked at and reviewed, but we will definitely get you a copy. But these have already gone to the printer and will already be placed out for mail next week. But we will make sure that we get you a copy.
All right, please proceed.
Kind of along those lines, you know, something that we've had success with in other cities is working with members of the various utility boards that we work with. So to everyone here, you know, we're happy to do a virtual presentation about our programs, or none of us are actually here. We're all based in other areas. We're happy to come back and take some time to meet with various community leaders, talk with your staff some more. I know tomorrow we have a virtual meeting and believe with some of the, some of the local individuals from the city council in the various neighborhoods to make sure the information's out there. You know, we operate when it comes to marketing materials and information. We don't like our partners being surprised. We understand the concern with that. And one of the things that we'll be doing after launch is meeting regularly with DWSD staff to walk through what's been going on with our program, where things are going. I have monthly check-ins that are, you know, fairly high level, and then more regular annual reviews that go more in the weeds to make sure that the information's there, not only for you, but also for the residents that, that you serve, and ultimately the residents that we want to have as customers. Next slide, please. So hearing a lot of this, you know, the one thing that we're asked is, okay, this sounds too good to be true. So what's the catch? Again, stressing the insurance versus the warranty side of things. We provide coverage for what is the homeowner responsibility. So that generally for the water service line, that starts at the property boundary where there's the curb stop or the outside valve to the house, and then on the sewer service, it starts from the house to the property, property boundary as well. And within that, it is general wear and tear. We are finalizing our terms and conditions. You know, this is fairly generous in terms of what is covered based off the, off of the regular wear and tear. And again, it's something that can really help provide peace of mind for residents for things that, again, you generally don't think about and don't want to think about, quite honestly. I think all of us like having our water, our sewer taken care of. And this is for illustrative purposes only. Again, just one of those things to stress, especially in older, you know, cities, where you used to doing work in New York City, in Philadelphia. Infrastructure in some cases similar, in some cases different to here. You know, we understand how to handle situations on a case-by-case basis when necessary. It's not one size fits all, all the time. We understand there's a lot of unique circumstances that come up. And that's where myself, Tiffany, and then one of our colleagues, Lewis Donner, who was unable to be here today, come in because we're the primary contact for DWSD to help resolve those issues and address those circumstances. Next slide, please. Tiffany covered a little bit. Again, this is very high level for the water line plan. So this is unlimited protection for covered repairs. When we find a lead line, we replace a lead line. Full stop. There's no if and or buts about it. Again, this is something we're used to doing. I feel that's important to stress, given just the history of bloodlines in this country, the health impacts there, and then just the general concern that we know a lot of our customers have regardless of area. We will also pay to repair a leaking or broken water line if it resulted from normal wear, wear and usage. So wear and usage, general usage. And again, the coverage starts from a water meter remaining shut off, you know, inside the home to the point where it connects to the utility. One thing that I think is very important to note as this program goes out is when residents sign up, there is a thirty-day window before they can make a claim. And the claim has to be a new claim. It can't be something that's pre-existing or known. But after those thirty days, and generally we understand this, there tends to be a spike on day thirty-one. We get that. It happens. But, you know, we're also happy to have folks use our program. That's why we're here. Next slide, please. And very similar on the sewer line protection program. Unlimited program, limit for covered repairs, paying to repair the clogs, blockages, or breaks that adversely impact the flow of wastewater. And again, there, the coverage starts at the external wall of the home to the point where it crosses the property line or hits the, the sewer main. And next slide. Our customers got in our postcard, they've seen our ad, they've heard us speak at a community meeting in the next couple of weeks, and they sign up. They wake up one day and lo and behold, they have to file the claim. What does that process look like? So there's a phone number that will be unique to Detroit that they'll pick up and they'll call. Our contact center employees are trained to ask a lot of probing questions. And we do have, as part of our contract with you, you know, it is our goal to answer all calls in under forty-five seconds, which is very important. You know, you have a water issue, a sewer issue, you don't want to be put on hold or told, call back. I'm not going to say it's always one hundred percent, you know, perfect. It is a call center. There are variations, but that's our goal. These folks will ask those probing questions. If the answer comes back that yes, this looks like it's covered, they'll go into some of our, our software services, they'll identify the available contractors, which in this case are all going to be Detroit-based. And we have committed to hiring one hundred percent minority-owned contractors within the city of Detroit. They'll identify the contractors, they'll send out the contractors. And then to resolve the issue, the contractors will arrive on-site, they'll investigate in the way that they see fit, and then they will repair and restore the service. In terms of the contractors that we hire, along with the commitment of hiring Detroit-based, one hundred percent minority-owned, safety is our highest priority and our highest standard. So there are conditions that have to be met. There is expertise we're looking for, and we are in a new area. So, you know, we're building up our knowledge base of contractors as well. Eventually, we will be at a point where we know who our good ones are, who the ones that are coming up the ranks are, and we're able to get the right people in the right places. Early on, we're making sure that we're here to serve your customers, your residents. Next slide. That covers the high-level portion of it. Very happy to take any questions. And again, any that I'm unable to answer today, I will very happily take back to our people and turn those answers around very quickly.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Just curious, in cities like Detroit, can you tell us what are the top two reasons a claim would get rejected?
Sure, yes. I'm happy to answer that. So when we venture into a new area, a lot of customers don't realize that AWR does it all. So they will hire their own plumber, and then they'll ask us for reimbursement. There are several things that we can do to mitigate that. We have a campaign called AWR, Call AWR First. We can post on social media. The second, I would say, is probably that there's no issue found. So a customer will call in, it will sound like it's something that's covered. We will dispatch a contractor out, and there's not a problem with their plumbing, their outside plumbing. So for your outside sewer line, most homeowners don't know if they have a blockage inside. They think, oh, it's my main sewer line. And so we investigate and it's internal. So those would be the two that I would say would stick out most to me is that they don't know how the program works and they hire their own plumber, or there's just no issue found, and the issue is inside the home, not on those main outside lines.
So, so you're going to, you're going to cover from, from the meter inside the house to the main?
Yes.
And you're saying that there could be a plumbing issue internal somewhere inside the house that's not covered?
Correct.
And the kitchen sink is, is blocked. I, I got you. I, I just, a, a, a couple of points. I, I don't know if the chair was going to bring it up, but there's, there is a premium sharing arrangement with this, with this deal. Yeah, I will come back to the board with, with a recommendation on what those dollars could be used for. I could, I could just name three things that could be useful, but I'll certainly take, take my lead from you. Certainly, we could use the dollars to purchase policies for those that could not afford the eight dollars. That, that's an option. We could roll the money back into the wrap program. That's, that's an option. I'm sure my CFO would like us to cover some of the bad debt that we, I mean, that he'll make a pitch for that, and he'll probably lose, but we, those, those are options, but we will come back to you. Secondly, it's no doubt in my mind that if DWSD did the collection of the premiums, that this business would either double or triple. If you could make the payment when you make your water bill payment, there's no doubt. As you know, we are going through a extensive upgrade of Inquest, our billing system, which I expect to be done in the next, fingers crossed, couple of months, maybe ninety days or so. And certainly, we will take six months or so and try to understand how well this program is working, that it's working as intended, that we don't need to go back and maybe tweak some things. But if it's working as intended, we could renegotiate a contract in which we would accept the premiums and, and I'm sure that, well, I'm not sure. They can tell you that the, the amount of premiums would go double or possibly triple if, if we did that. So we're going in this slowly, make sure that all of our customers are satisfied. Everybody's able to deliver the services that are being outlined. And if that is happening, once we have our billing system, it will, the new system will be capable of accepting a premium and separating it out from the water sewer or drainage. And we'll, we'll take a look at that. But right now, we're going to, we're going to go a little slow to make sure that everything that's being promised can be.
I'm going to call on Commissioner Forte. She has a hard stop coming up soon. So Commissioner.
A couple of questions, and I think they're quick, but, and probably to Director Brown. Obviously, it does sound too good to be true. I mean, it does sound like a good program. And I always pause on that and say, hmm, and we're linking our hat to this. So what might be the reputational risk if something does go wrong with the program? I mean, we don't even have our hat quite linked to the land bank, and we already see the hard egg that it caused, causes. So I, I just wonder. So that leads me to questions of how strong is the company from a financial perspective? I've heard that they are in two or three cities, and so of our similar size. So that's a question I have. And then the other is just from my education. They speak to contractors working with our homeowners here in Detroit. Are these contractors mainly plumbers? I was just trying to understand the level of expertise that's required for.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let them answer the second one. I, I can, I can say that we, we put this out to bid in an RFP in a, in, in a very robust process in which we did a lot of background checking in Philadelphia and other cities because your, your question was one of my concerns. I'm putting our reputation on the line with this. And I'm satisfied that the team was able to convince me that our risk is minimal based on what's going on in other jurisdictions and other cities. And once I understood the financial model, that it's not based on everything that's happening in Detroit, but. everything that's happening in Detroit, but when you aggregate the accounts that they have with other cities and what's going on in Detroit, the model works for them. But I'll let them speak to that because we, we've had some very robust discussions about these same issues with, with them prior to signing this contract.
No, and those, those are good questions. I'll address the financial and maybe can address some of the more, you know, operational side of things. Regarding us as a company, us as a company is well over 20 years old. We were initially founded, part of our company was founded under Nycor as a gas and electric warranty service. The other half was founded under the American Water Umbrella. The American Water Umbrella includes 14 states with regulated operations that serves about 35 million Americans directly with water, significantly more than that. We were sold by that company end of last year to a private equity firm who has, very surprisingly so, and I've said this before, kept their hands back and is letting us operate the business. So for us, we have the expertise, we have the knowledge. Some of the other cities that we've been in include New York, Philadelphia, Orlando, as well as those American Water operating states. When it comes to, you know, this specific with Detroit, you know, it's on us and our marketing team to make it work, to get people on board. What makes us different than some of our competitors? And there's probably a half dozen really big ones out there along with us that are in this space is that we do it right the first time. So that unlimited claims throughout the year, that's as much a boast as it is a guarantee. That's us saying that we're gonna come in, we're gonna take care of this, we're gonna make sure that's done well. And that also goes to the relationship that we develop with our contractors. We want the best contractors. We want the good contractors. I don't know personally, you know, if that's plumbing specific, just by the nature of the kind of work they're doing in outside in Detroit, but we've got the expertise to do that. We're upfront and willing to do that. And again, it's really on us and our marketing team to get the people on board. The partnership with DWSD and some of the cities I mentioned is primarily, you know, just that, a partnership. It's being able to talk with all of you, share information. Hopefully, you know, have your support, which you all have chosen us. So we have that now. And the program, you know, the, the contract is for several years. And I'll stress again, we're going to be here and talking with staff every month. We're more than happy to come out to talk to you, constituent groups, talk about who we are and what we're doing. That's what makes us different and that what, that's what makes us a little bit better. And I apologize, you had a second more, I think, operational type question as well.
Yeah, in terms of the universe of expertise required for the work that the homeowners would, would apply for, request, is that primarily plumbers or is that, is there some other kind of specialized expertise that needs to be accounted for?
So I would say our, our bread and butter is our outside water and sewer products that we're offering in Detroit. And we have a contractor recruitment department that does nothing but try to get contractors in the network for us and available to service claims.
And are those primarily plumbers?
Primarily plumbers, yes.
Yeah, so I do worry a little bit about that in terms of, you know, guardrails that you've, you've got there. I just will be, I'll be curious and be watching to see how that plays out.
One other thing I just want to assure you all is that we will have escalations or customers that are upset. It's just the nature of the business. But we, we have a direct line of people that work directly in escalations that work to resolve these issues as well as myself. And Ben, we're here at 24/7 to support those instances that there are customer complaints that come in.
Right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious. I don't want to sound like the pessimist. I live here in the city, so it sounds like a great program. I agree with Director with Linda. Few questions. What's the name of the private equity company that owns you guys?
Apex.
Apex?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You use a term up there that says unlimited. I mean, just my experience working with private equity, that really doesn't exist in their world. So one of the things, Director Brown, and by no means do I want our board to get in the weeds with you and your team. I mean, like Linda said, this, this sounds really, really great. So you said unlimited. I'm sure at some point you capped.
A lot of the terms and conditions come down to that, that warranty side, the regular wear and tear. If you're dumping, if someone's doing illegal dumping chemicals or something we found where it's very clearly burned a hole through it and that's not coming from your kitchen sink.
So that's gonna be a problem in Detroit. Some of these homes are almost 100 years old. So I'm sure that's gonna be the first flag that's gonna be thrown out, wear and tear. One of the other questions I had is you mentioned using minority contractors, which I'm all for. But one of the problems I've had with warranty companies in the past is they take care of it when they get, when they want to take care. If my basement is flooding and my sewer is not working, I need it done now, not three days from now. And so I, I want you to be careful when you say minority contractors because I see what's gonna happen where we couldn't find someone to get there. I want a group of great contractors that are Detroit based and, and just happen to be minorities. And that's gonna be the key because I don't want the excuse that we couldn't find a contract. Because I can see that one coming under that one too, because the automotives do it, a lot of people in this space do it. But I think this is great. I'm gonna drill down on your company because I've never heard of you. I noticed on the plumbing, I was looking on your site, there were some limits. I think capped at $3,000. And so, I mean, you spelled it out right there. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, so the, the programs that we offer in different areas are tailored to those areas. And I don't believe that the program goes live on our end, April 29th, right before those mailers hit. So I don't know that our web service, that our website has, I don't know that you can put a Detroit zip code in and get that information specific to you. You know, the water and sewer line are just two of, I think we're over like three or four dozen products that we offer in a wide range of areas. And again, we work with our partners and tailor what we're offering and what we're, what we're working with them on to those areas. Neither of us were involved, involved in the RFP process for this one, but in talking with folks who were, you know, it was very specific and tailored to the, the water line and the sewer line. So there's, there's a lot of other things out there and it's not, you know, in this instance, our focus is on getting this program launched in the next two weeks, getting it successfully launched and working through some of the kinks that happen because we know we're good. We know that we can back up a lot of what we do. But we also know launching in a new area with people like you, with residents who are a little hesitant and do have concerns, we know there's going to be questions. And that's why I stress we're willing to come back and speak with you all whenever appropriate.
Good. Director Brown, one of the other things, and you would probably know this. A lot of problems that folks have, I would say, what would you say the percentage are is the city's fault? Versus I've got something going on in my own home and I would warn you, that's gonna be the hornet's nest.
Yeah, you know, we hear a lot about flooding. 80% of it, I would say, has nothing to do with the sewer line that has collapsed and is causing it. Most of it is done by tree roots that are in the lateral sewer line or something that's going on inside, inside the home. And so let me, let me just also indicate that we did point them towards contractors that we've used in the past in Detroit. We, we, we know, my, my biggest concern was I'm starting a basement backup protection program. I'm trying to get as much capacity as I can. Would they be competing with my contractor capacity? So, and you got less service lines going on. This, this really is not licensed plumber work. This is labor. You do have to have a knowledge of the work. But the only time you need a licensed plumber is once you're connecting a meter inside the home. And they're working on the outside of the home for, for the most part. So we, you know, we know the, the plumbers in the city that we recommend and we gave them a list of those and I'm not quite sure who, who they've selected yet. But you know, every question that you're raising, you know, is one that we also.
This works. This is great.
Well, we're gonna, we're we would have been, we're going slow. If I had of taking ownership of collecting the money and it didn't work out, then you know, our reputation would really be. But right now, we've had a great relationship in negotiating this contract. We've done our background on, on the company. And so we're gonna go six months and see how things are. And I'm hoping that we will take on the responsibility because we, you know, we could be bringing in an excess of a couple million dollars if we can do this right. And that would be used to help other low income customers with a lot of different things. So we're a partner in this and until we're not.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did I hear you say that you were committed to 100% Detroit based contractors or 100% minority contractors?
Minority and Detroit based.
Yes, minority and Detroit. Okay, all right. And Director Brown, do we have our diversity and inclusion? Who polices that section of the?
Our diversity and inclusion.
Okay.
The department, before that, it was the city's Creo Department, but we are working very closely with them with our own Tiffany Jones, monitoring it.
Okay. And the other question that I have is I heard you say that you were hiring four individuals for the call center? And those folks were gonna be Detroit residents? Did I hear you right?
Yes, sir.
That's not all the call people you have. That's just four, right?
Correct. And those four, their primary area will be assisting Detroit residents and then overflow from other areas.
Okay, so outside of that four, is the call center based offshore?
Our call center is, was a base of Alden, Illinois, although our parent company kicked us out of our office there. So we're, we're kind of scattered with that one. And our primary call center is in the Chicago suburbs, Naperville.
More specifically, are these people who have English as a first language?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Blackman.
That was an important question. Thank you very much. I have had some experiences. Anyway, the mailer that goes out, is, is that the one that hits, the heading is a new program for Detroit homeowners? What is, what is, I didn't, I don't recall which one is the mailer.
If we can go up a couple of slides. I don't remember which slide it is. Yep, right there. Yes, the, the new program, and those were the draft ones. Those are not the final ones. We will make sure to share those around. The new program for Detroit homeowners, that's the postcard that will hit first. And then the letter behind it is what will hit a couple of days later.
The, the one that's headed for important information for DWSD customers, that goes mail, they get mailed out as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I know that there's sometimes a reluctance on the part of residents, people period, with reading a lot of stuff. If there's a way that may be encapsulated or boldened, the most important thing that I need to, when I look at this, it jumps out at me, not just the heading. I'm just a suggestion to look at how we might be able to make sure customers are reading the most important part of the documents that you're sending out by the way you design it.
Absolutely. And that was, that was an area that we had a lot of back and forth with our internal marketing team and the communications folks here and with the mayor's office. When it comes to these, these two materials specifically, our marketing team has shared the metrics of what the response rates are initially with those. To my shock, it is significantly higher with that, primarily because of what they've told us is the more formal nature of it. But what you've asked for and what the staff here have asked for, that is our priority for follow-up ones. It's just that initial launch one. And I mean, we really had a lot of fun internal discussion on that, on our end. Because Tiffany and I were here to advocate for our partner, which is DWSD and kept saying, this is not what they're looking for. And they kept showing us the numbers and it was one that I don't like saying I lost to marketing, but I lost to marketing in this instance. But we do want to do more, I think, colorful and inviting communication going forward. And I know some of the digital media that will be going out is much more colorful unless I don't want to say legally is looking, but I can fully see where it would come off like that.
Thank you.
What, what other cities are you working with?
Currently, the other large cities we have are New York, Philadelphia, San Francisco, Orlando Utilities Commission.
Nashville.
Nashville.
So New York, Philadelphia, San Francisco, their, their infrastructure is of a comparable age as ours, I assume. Second question is, are you rated by Moody's for best or any of the rating agencies?
Yes, we are accredited by the Better Business Bureau with an A plus rating for that. Yep.
Right. And in terms of the risk pool, I mean, this works because everybody pays, but not everybody files a claim. And typically, there's underwriting that's done in a comparable situation. And we heard the director say today that in terms of allocating where we're going to be making infrastructure improvements, we can predict parts of the infrastructure that's likely to fail. I presume some similar metrics are available to be predictive of what neighborhoods are likely to have sewer or line. But you're not, the, the premium is the the premium is the same wherever you are in the city.
Correct.
And in terms of the risk pool, is it just Detroit? Or the other cities are part of sharing the risk?
I mean, as a, as a business, obviously, there's, you know, everything comes together at a point. Before we go out and respond to RFPs, before we engage in negotiation with any utility public or investor owned, you know, we've, we've done our homework. What we found is, over the years, every city is going to have a little bit of variance. And we know what our expectations are. We know what that timeframe is. We also know that if somebody has signed up, let's say for our combo program and they have a water line and they file a claim on that, they're probably gonna keep either the combo or go to the sewer line because they've seen the benefit of it. And their neighbors are gonna see the benefit of that as well. You know, it's always a risk. You know, again, we've done our math. We saw this as a good opportunity. We wouldn't be here before you if it wasn't a good opportunity for us, for you, and more importantly, for the residents of the city. But it is something that's out there and, you know, the cities you described, it's not like New York and Philadelphia are any younger. They've got some of the same issues and.
Are there, are the premiums in New York and Philadelphia comparable?
When we initially launched, yes, but we did have to increase price a little bit when we renewed those contracts.
How much more did it go up?
I'm sorry?
How much more did it increase?
It was about a dollar, a dollar or a dollar fifty for the combo.
That was after several years.
Several years, yes. And I will say with the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We do have a pricing schedule in that contract. So years one and two, it's that initial, what I, what we showed you. And three to 10, I think it's a dollar more. So for 10 years, it's a locked in price.
Okay. And I guess my last question slash comment is, you know, the, the deal you make with the devil with insurance is you're buying something that most nights you pray you never have to use. I pay money to protect my house from burning down. And I hope it never burns down, but I pay the money anyways. And so again, it, it, it works because we know some people are going to make the premium and are never going to make a claim. And we, we just don't know who. And that's what, what pooling a risk is. So I, you know, I, I'm sure you've crunched the numbers and the, this looks like a pretty good bargain for people who are risk adverse and also understand how insurance works. I may be adding $7 to the bill and I'm never gonna make a claim. And I'm, I'm paying, I'm paying for the protection. So I gotta think about this some more, but my, my take on this is as long as we're satisfied that it's a good company and can deliver, it's, and if the numbers work, it's a that it's a good company and can deliver, it's, and if the numbers work, it's a win-win. Because we were offering some protection for a nominal price against what can be a very expensive occurrence. And this is pure speculation, but we, we always want to talk about equity. You know, I don't know what the profile of the likely customer is, but probably people who think more about this stuff and $7 is something that's very affordable. And we've got that group of our, our ratepayers who are providing new revenue for the authority that I am hearing the director say is likely to be applied to that group of our ratepayers who are less off. And so I, I'm, I'm intrigued. I'm intrigued. Mr. Commissioner Davis?
What's the projected number of, of homes that you think will sign up for?
Number of homes?
Yes.
That I don't know. I would have to look that up.
Say that again?
I would, are you talking of number of homes that are in Detroit or that will sign up?
Projected number of homes that you believe will participate and pay a premium for your product. You don't know that?
Generally, the areas where we have a similar relationship with a partner, our penetration in terms of the number of households varies between 25 to about 35% of households.
So what's that number?
Thinking of, I want to say that there was 260,000 households is the information that we had, we had shared with, or been shared by the staff here. So about 60,000, 70,000 homes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I appreciate the presentation, and we, I think we all have an appreciation of all of the discussions that have gone on before this one. And I, I, I think we're intrigued and.
Yeah, it, you know, it stops the bleeding. If, if you have this, we, we have these people that are coming to our, our podium every, so how do we stop the bleeding? If you've got the insurance, you, you're covered at least.
Yesterday, I went to Home Depot and I bought an electric drill. And what's the first thing that the cashier asked me if I wanted in, when I was buying the electric drill?
Do you want a warranty?
Do I want the war, or the, the, the protection?
Protection plan, yeah.
And I said, you just told me that this is a great drill, but now you're saying it might not be so great. So I should buy the extended warranty. I'm, I'm comfortable that the drill is fine. I think I'm, I bought my house about two years ago, and we put a camera down the sewer before, you know, we closed. I think I'm comfortable that the sewer is okay, but for $7.95 a month, that's not a bad deal.
Okay.
Commissioner?
I, I would say this, my, my biggest concern is timing to actually get it done.
Yeah.
It's, it's like national healthcare. You, you wait in line, if it's not life-threatening to get a knee or hip replaced, but if you have the money, you go and you get it right away. So that's just, I, I'm just concerned because when there's water in someone's basement, it's not a three, four-day thing.
Right. And we've, to that, and we actually had a discussion today with the staff here about ensuring the right communication and processes to help with water shut-off permitting. And within the, the contract that was signed by both us and you all, there are, there's a service level agreement in there in terms of how long we have to respond. And that's something that we take very seriously. And if contractors aren't meeting it, we're going to find contractors who do, and we're going to get the right ones out there to do that.
All right, I'm going to suggest, the time is late and the agenda is still full. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then.
Okay. Nikki, were you trying to, to get in?
I'll pass. I just wanted to thank the board. Reminder that they did approve this relationship a couple of months ago. And we are excited about the work that they're going to do, and we'll come back in a couple of months with good stories.
Very good. Then let's go back to item nine on our agenda, communications. And the first item is the receipt of correspondence, and it's the FOIA monthly request under the Freedom of Information Act.
Motion to receive and file, Mr. Chair.
There's been a motion to receive and file. Is there support?
Yes.
There is support. Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that is adopted. Item 10 is items from the commissioners. Are there any items from the commissioners? Right. Item 11 is unfinished business, and we have none. So item 12 is the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval of item consent agendas, items 12A through H.
All right. It's been moved. It's been seconded. The consent agenda is exactly that. It requires unanimous consent. Does any commissioner want any of the items on the consent agenda to be removed and considered separately? All right. And each of these items was considered by the appropriate committee. I'm sorry I wasn't with you a week and a half ago. I was on the lodge freeway, and somebody dumped what I can just call steel shrapnel and took out a tire. So, so, all right, it's been moved. It's been seconded. Any comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And that is adopted. We've done item 13B, item 13C, opportunity and, I'm sorry, oh, A? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was the consent agenda. All right. Item 13A, move approval. All right. It's been moved.
Second.
And supported. This is the adoption of the final project plan for the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department. Water systems improvement, water main replacement, and designation as an authorized project representative for fiscal year 2023. Drinking water resolved fund. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I just did.
The resolution.
Page sixty-three of your book.
Page sixty-three?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Fifty-seven. Mr. Chair. Yes. Okay, Mr. Mary.
Commissioner Davis?
No, that's Commissioner Black.
Blackman.
We, 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 we look alike.
Seriously, we have to read that whole thing?
Yes.
I don't get that. But, okay.
It's a resolution.
Commissioner Blackman?
A resolution adopting.
By the way, if you get tired, someone can read the second half.
I'll yield.
A resolution adopting a final project plan for the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department. Notice, public hearing for water main replacement funding year, fiscal year 23 drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF project. Whereas, the city of Detroit, through its Detroit Water and Sewerage Department and the Great Lakes Water Authority, jointly recognize the need to make improvements to portions of the existing water distribution system that are owned and operated by the city of Detroit and that are physically located within the city limits. And whereas, the DWSD prepared a drinking water state revolving fund project plan, which recommends water main replacement and associated appurtenances, including removal of certain lead service lines in the Warren Dale, McDowell, Clayton, Brightmore, Spring Wells, Prairie slash St. Mary's, and Grandmont neighborhoods in the city of Detroit, further referenced as WS-732. And whereas, the DWSD prepared a drinking water state revolving fund project plan, which recommends water main replacement and associated appurtenances, including removal of certain lead service lines in the Martin Park, Pilgrim Village, University District, Grickstale Farms, Greenfield Park, Maple Ridge, East English Viget, East English Village, Yorkshire Woods, Denby, and Outer Drive Hayes neighborhoods in the city of Detroit, further referenced as WS-733. And whereas, the project plan was presented by DWSD at a public hearing held on April 20, 2022 at 2:00 PM. And the DWSD Water Board of Water Commissioners Boardroom and all public comments were considered and addressed. And whereas, the DWSD formally adopted and said project plan and agreed to implement the identified selected alternative of water main and lead service line replacements as described in said document, as evidenced by the DWSD resolution in attachment one. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the director currently held by Mr. Gary Brown, why does he currently? Held by Mr. Gary Brown is designated to sign contractual and other loan-related documents as required or recommended, and for the purpose of serving as a, as primary points of contact for local and state intergovernmental coordination during implementation of the projects. Be it further resolved, the, the Board of Water Commissioners recognizes the DWRF requirement that GLWA serve as the DWRF loan applicant on behalf of the city of Detroit, the loan recipient for all activities required by DWRF financing, and in accordance with local and state intergovernmental agreements, be it further resolved that the director is authorized to transmit the final DWSD water main replacement DWSRF project plan to GLWA Board of Directors and DWSD BOWC, and take all appropriate steps to secure approval of low-interest loan in accordance with the state of Michigan, DW, state of Michigan's DWRF procedures so that the project can proceed expeditiously for construction. Is that it?
It's been moved. Or any discussion? Then this requires a roll call vote. I would ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Chairman Einhausen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Blackman?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinlock?
Yes.
All right, the motion, the resolution is adopted. We are now at item 13C, opportunity and inclusion introduction.
Mr. Chair, without objection, I would like to go to D because I have to leave.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, move adoption.
Without objection, it's ordered. Let's move to item D.
Move to, move to adopt.
It's been moved and supported. We are approving an amendment to Article 10 of our bylaws. Everyone knows what this is?
Yes.
What are we doing?
The, the rules, you know, committee structure, taking, yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought our original amendment said that a minimum of three, but that doesn't mean a maximum of three.
No, we, we're going back to whatever we had before.
Okay. I, I, I'm in favor of that. Does everyone understand? Okay. Does she hear it?
Have to go.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, she, I, I have, I have talked to Ms. Pusbeish, and she is in concurrence with the board on this issue.
And, you know, for, we, we, we made this modification largely in reaction to the pandemic and the reluctance, the understandable reluctance of people to come here in person. And, you know, it's not over, but it's not as severe as it was. And I mean, from my perspective, we need to take advantage of the experience and the skills of all of the commissioners to the maximum extent possible. So I think this is a good thing. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Your, your prior resolution, your original bylaws and the prior resolution said no more than, first said no more than four, now it was back to no more than three. Now we're changing it to at least three.
At least three.
And then you have all kinds of flexibility.
And, and not just us, but future boards. We're not all going to be sitting here forever. So I think that's, that's a good thing. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the amendment to the bylaws, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that is approved.
Mr. Chair, can, can I recommend that for 13C, we bring that back at the next, at the next meeting? I mean, it, it, it's, it's a lengthy presentation, and I think it, it.
Waits.
Yeah, it warrants a fresh set of eyes to take a look at.
I agree. I agree. I, that we. The director's metrics. Before we lose our quorum, there's nothing else on the agenda that requires a quorum, I assume. All right. Well, then let's do this. Let's move to comments by commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Coleman?
Director Brown, what's going on with our beautiful boardroom? I'm starting to notice the paint's coming off.
Well, you, you approved a contract to, to make some repairs. We did have a, a problem up on the, on the floor above us. There's a, there's a ledge that was collecting water and leaked in. But we have a contract, and we're going to bring it back to its historical state very shortly.
I appreciate.
The leak is taken care of.
I love looking at this room when I'm looking around.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we cleaned up the water damage, and we have a contract in place. It was, actually, we had to fix the problem so that it never happens again, and it's been done. So now it's just getting the historical part of it put back together. Yes, they do. You, you, you're absolutely right. It's a shared service.
And, and Mr. Chair, I had on my calendar, so there's no meeting on the 25th? Special meeting? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other comments by commissioners? Comments by the chair? I'm simply going to say, I thought we had a very good discussion during our public participation. And I don't think any of us want to go out of the way of vilifying the land bank. And, and as Commissioner Kinlock pointed out, we're, we're all appointed by the mayor, and at least at some level, we're on the same team. That said, I think we've heard some legitimate concerns. And there are problems landing at our table that are not of our making. And so I think we have to have some very frank and, and civil but frank discussions and let us, you know, that, that meeting with, I, I don't want to turn that meeting that they come before us into any kind of kangaroo court or crucifixion. I think we need to think about how we want to conduct that meeting. I know we, we, we want members of the public to speak, and we want them to speak their mind. And let's think about, you know, I, we've sort of changed the way we were, we, we react to public participation. When I was first here, people would raise questions, and we would say, thank you very much. Who's next? And that's not satisfactory. If, to the extent we can answer a specific question when the person's standing there, we should answer that question. On the other hand, you know, we can't promise or guarantee immediate relief to what their concern is. And so maybe I, we should chat with the land bank and.
Yeah.
If there may, maybe have some, you know, if they can answer a specific question, then they should endeavor to do so, but.
I, I think, Mr. Chair, it's going to be important to hear what they're doing differently going forward.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm, I'm just going to be frank. I mean, every time I say, send me over the closing documents that the customer signed when he, in big, bold, red letters, it clearly states that the land bank does not know whether or not there is a severed line or not, that it's the owner, the buyer's responsibility, every time. Now, there are a number of people that they will admit they didn't have that information there. And we've since drafted documents to go with the closing, to be placed in their hand that, that bolsters that, that same information. So.
Bolsters what?
Bolsters what?
The fact that-
Customer or the, the land bank?
The, the fact that the land bank is selling this property, and they do not know whether or not. And so they make the assumption that
It's okay.
That it's not. I mean, that's what the land bank, in, in the documents are saying, so. But again, it's important to understand what they're doing going forward, because there's not a lot you can do about the houses that have already been sold, the people that are out there, except we put a contract in place, and we're going to fix those lines for that, that group of people.
And I, I'm not going to make any judgments, you know, the young man, Jermaine, he's got a phone number that is not three one three. I don't know where he came from. He came to Detroit to buy a three thousand dollar house, and he didn't buy a three thousand dollar, he paid three thousand dollars.
Yeah, and it, it doesn't make sense for a gas station to connect its line to a residential line. I mean, we, we've been out there and looked at this, and-
I mean, don't we have a cause of action?
That, he has, he, he has a cause of action.
They tapped into his line.
That's, that's his allegation, but we haven't seen evidence of that, so. But we're, we're still going to try, we're still going to try to, we're still going to try to help resolve this issue.
Here's my point. I know that the language that is drafted by the land bank would protect them legally.
Yes.
Okay, and but you mentioned earlier, beef that is the moral part.
Yeah, yes, right.
That is doing something to our citizens. May not be, and I use the word sophisticated enough.
Right.
And that's probably not the right word.
Technology.
Okay, but there are some people, when it says, I don't know, you and I, those listeners, will say, ooh, that's a real plan.
Yeah.
There's a number of people, particularly when you have the one thousand dollar, two thousand, three thousand dollar level. That wouldn't be the same, really.
Yeah, right, and, and you have-
The land bank wouldn't sell them a pig in a broke.
And, and you, and you have to make dollars available in a home repair program to be able to, if, if you're not going to income qualify, you know this house can't be bought up to code for a thousand dollars, and so then you, you make dollars available in a, in, in, they call it HRD Home Repair Program to, that they can access in order to not only resolve those issues, they, they have more than just plumbing issues, they have lots of issues.
Better way. Better way would say, yes, we don't know. But if it does need this, it can cost you X many thousand dollars.
Motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Thank you.